We're always here for your blessings.
These are more, these are more changes?
Yeah, these are feedback updates from the fire team.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is now 7:00 P.M. Welcome to our regular council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 19, 2023. This year is almost over. And we always start our agenda with invocation, and then it's led by the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all stand and join us tonight? And tonight, we are having Dan Zander do our invocation. Thank you again.
Most gracious God, I thank you for this day, thank you for this night. We would, we just wanted to keep the meeting go smooth this evening and pray for all the council members here in the audience. We just wanted to, we love you very much, and we just wanted to keep this place nice and, nice and organized and things like that. And we love to be here with you and guide us and protect us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Again, please make sure your phones is on silent or vibrate at this time. We are going to our roll call. Good evening, Ms. Holman.
Good evening, Mayor.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Present.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Mayor Owens?
Here. Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda, council.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next is the hearing of the public. We have two at the regular meeting. At a special meeting, we only have one. You have one in the beginning, and at the end, you get three minutes. The hearing of the public is now open.
Hello. My name is Magdalene Buchak, and I'm a resident of East Point here a few years. I'm here to ask the council if they could consider and giving approval to East Point's high school homecoming parade. It's going to be October, I was just called today to ask if I could help maybe form the little parade. It's going to be October the 13th. It's a Friday, and I guess the game starts at seven o'clock, and so they would want a parade, I guess, before that. However, it's a Friday night. Who would want to do a parade an hour before during rush hour? So it'd be up to you to decide and maybe consider the route as well, because I was given a little update on the old route that you, that is recorded in the books or so. And it's like you take five or nine different streets to have this little parade. So I'm thinking because of the construction all over town, maybe you can think of a better route and make it a smaller parade, just so that's something they can have as a little parade. But I understand the council has to vote on this. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Would you be able to enter that into agenda tonight, because it's only four weeks from today?
We have, you have to put some paperwork in for a special event like that?
I do not. I do not.
You don't? So why did you, why don't you think you have to?
Wait, I'm sorry, what did you say?
You have to put in paperwork for a special event like that and let us know more about it.
Okay, the, let's see, the, who would that be?
Mayor, if I may, yes, I understand this is public comment, and we should not be responding, but we just got this email tonight, and our community engagement manager will be responding in the morning.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holman.
Thank you.
Karen Maragen, this one's a bit dated, should have been read quite a few meetings ago. So here it goes. I do not agree with what was discussed at the last meeting in allowing a 13- or 14-year-old child to sit among council members during the meeting. The child is not old enough for a work permit nor a city employee. She's not old enough to vote. This is a council meeting. It's not kinder care nor daycare. The child does not belong seated among council members during the meeting. It cheapens democracy. A council meeting is not bring your friend, child, friend, relative, et cetera, to work. A child seated among council meetings during a meeting is not appropriate. You don't see congress members or Michigan legislators dragging along friends or family members onto the floor with them during a vote. At least this November, our new mayor will restore common sense and decency. We can finally be rid of the tyranny, temper tantrums, and meetings held hostage. And also addressing in my comments that all anyone had to do at a previous meeting was to answer Councilman Curly's request for a date to further discuss naming a park after Harvey Creach. Instead, nothing was done. No interest was shown. I find that beyond disrespectful for all that Harvey did for this city. Why is that the only one who seems to give a damn about honoring Harvey as our city attorney? He put a lot of work into research and was willing to promptly draft a motion to start the process that would allow a park to be named in his honor. When was the last time any of you reached out to his wife, his family? When are you going to honor Harvey and his family at a future council meeting? As for not wanting to rename Kennedy Park, that park is an absolute hellhole, replete with several shootings this summer. What a disgrace to JFK. Since the Spindler family transferred the land, there may or may not be conditions in the language preventing renaming the park. However, the lack of action is shameful. 130 East Point residents and employees signed the petition to honor Harvey. Thus far, you've done nothing to honor Harvey. I briefly want to put in my comments, it sounds like there's going to be a discussion in regards to fireworks being sold in the city. I'm not staying for the rest of the meeting. However, I think the city needs to look at working with state legislators to transfer over to drone fireworks. Traditional fireworks emit the same toxic chemicals that wildfires do, and it's a threat to our wildlife. Traditional fireworks, you run the risk of burning somebody's house down, you know, doing property damage, injuring yourself, injuring bystanders. That does not happen with drone fireworks.
All right, your time is up. Thank you for the drone fireworks. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
My name is Richard Enlich. I live on Forest. I've been there since 1950, 51. And this is a problem with my tree. I have the only tree left in the whole block. We used to be all tree-lined and everything. They chainsawed them all off, and I have the only one left. So anyway, the tree was, two and a half years ago, they marked my tree to be taken out, because there was a few dead branches in it. So I checked with Joe Marucci, which I thought was the head guy, and went to see him and everything like that. I said, you know, it has a lot of nostalgia to me. I planted that the year that I got married to my wife, and she's been gone 25 years already. So anyway, I said, you know, if nothing else, I said, you could trim a few dead branches out of that. He said, I'll do that for you. He said, I promise you faithfully that I will not take the tree out. So it went on for a whole year, and the following year, all of a sudden, I come home, and the tree is down. It's gone. So I called Joe. I said, what happened? He said, well, he said, Carol, Carol Atkins, or whether she's the head one, she has the final say-so. I said, you gave me your word that you would not take that tree down. There was nothing wrong. So I went to see Carol. Carol said that tree was dead. She looked at it when, before the leaves came out. That tree was perfectly green and everything like that, and they cut that big tree down on me, you know. I was totally crushed. I, you know, I only got 25% of my heart left or something like that. I've been in and out of the hospital and everything, all over that stinking tree, that they were so heartless that they took that tree out on me, you know. And the reason it half died was because the city came along and chainsawed it, chainsawed the roots off when they put a new slab in there. I even bowed, bowed this, put the forms in myself and boated around the tree. And all of a sudden, I come home, they changed, they pull the forms out, put it straight, and chainsawed the whole thing off. So anyway, so anyway, what I want now, and then I asked the guys, I said, how long will it be? He said, well, a week or two, and we'll take the stump out. It's been four months. I want to put another tree in there. It's been four months, and then I asked them, I said, who's the contractor? They said, it's not, it's not liable for, we can't give it to you. It's not public access or whatever it is, who the contractor. I never heard of anything like that. I thought everything in the, in the city was open to the public. What's going on about that?
Your time is up, sir. You get three minutes. If you want to give, did you, did you give us your address and your information?
Pardon?
Did you give us your address and your information?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll have someone get back with you on this subject topic?
Okay. But anyway, like I said, dude, nothing.
No, you're three, you only get three minutes. In the, in the beginning, you get three minutes to speak at the end. So your three minutes is up, sir. You get three minutes to speak in the beginning of the meeting, and you get additional three minutes closer to the end. So if you want to stay to the end and tell us some more about your tree situation, you can, or you can, you feel free to stay regardless if you want to speak or not, but you gave us your information. We'll have someone contact you about this.
You're gonna have more contact with me? I'm very hearing impaired, even though I have good hearing aids. I'm sorry. I didn't get it all.
Yes, sir. We'll have someone contact you.
You're gonna get, she's gonna get in contact with me?
We'll have someone get in contact with you, yes. Make sure we have your phone number and your email address.
I went to the office, by the way, where she, where she's at, you know, and everything like that.
Can someone, excuse me, can someone, can you go over here?
Madam Mayor, if I may, this is public comment, and we're not supposed to respond to those who are commenting, but the DPW department is fully aware of this gentleman's address.
Okay, thank you. We have a lot of people that come to the council meetings, and some might be elderly or, like he said, they can't hear. So if that happens, can we have someone come out and assist them so that they can understand what's going on or take their phone number down, so that they, we can go to the next person, so we can make sure we have order they feel like they're respected and listened to? So someone, please take this man's name and information down, so he can know he has been heard. Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Oh, good evening, and I'm not here to complain about anything. Hopefully, I can bring a little happiness and joy to people. My name is Mark Kilgore. I'm an East Point resident. I'm also one of the co-founders and member of the East Point Community Action Coalition, which has been around, I don't know, about 15 or 18 years. And what our mission is, support the resident of East Point surrounding communities by promoting a safe, healthy, and substance-free environment. And we envision East Point as a safe community, healthy, substance-free, where people want to live, visit, shop, and worship. And the reason I'm here tonight is I want to let everybody know that we're struggling a little. We need more community involvement to help our youth. The longer we can keep children away from alcohol and drugs, the less likelihood they would develop an addiction in adulthood. So we do different things like alternative to spring break, so kids aren't getting into mischief during spring break time while the parents are at work. We give them alternative things to do, safe and healthy. So on September 30th, at Coffee Break over here in Ten Mile, we're just gonna have an information session. I want to invite everybody listening, everybody here, council, all the administrators here for the city to come out, have a cup of coffee with us, learn more about what we do. And it takes a village, you know. We need to keep our, our kids safe. We need to teach them conflict resolution. Pulling out a gun is not the answer to things. So that's what, what I came about tonight. I didn't come to complain about anything. I'm just asking if we can get community involvement and help our youth. You know, I was one of them kids that didn't have these things growing up, and I went the wrong path. And I lived 25 years in active addiction, and now I have 25 years in active recovery. So it is possible. Maybe if we had these things more when I was a child, a youth, I wouldn't have went down that path if I would have had caring community. You know, back then, you just swept it under the rug. My drug prevention message was, don't do drugs. They're bad. That was about it. Well, kids want to know more. They're smart today. They want to know more. They're gonna research. And we need to let them know everything they see on the internet is not true. You know, a lot of them, well, they saw it on the internet. It's true. No, it's not, you know. So I want to thank everybody here, thank all of you, and come out and join us September 30th. I do have some flyers. Anybody's interested, just come out and let's get together as a community and see what we can do to be the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Anyone else? Say none. The first hearing, ooh, we need some funding for this. The first hearing of the public is now closed. Thank you, everyone that spoke. Can we go to scheduled hearings, council? I'm sorry, we have no scheduled hearings. Trying to make this a smooth meeting tonight, and we have no unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to go extra fast. I'm on Councilman Curly's speed. Let me go to approval of amendments, Councilman Curly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move to receive and file the regular minutes of a regular meeting of September 5th, 2023.
Second.
Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Moving along. No scheduled hearings, no unfinished business. Reports from administration. Good evening, Ms. Walton. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. So first, I'd like to highlight the salute to excellence with the East Point Roseville Chamber of Commerce. It's coming up. They are still taking reservations. So if you're interested in attending, you can still buy a ticket, I believe, through Monday. That event is scheduled for October 5th at 5:30 P.M. at Athena Hall. It's a great event. They honor Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, in our community, Citizen of the Year, Business of the Year, Improvement of the Year. So if you're interested in wanting to come out, you can still buy a ticket and attend that incredible event that they put on. We still have water filters that are available. MDHHS recommends that you replace the cartridge every two months. If you do not have an additional cartridge or still need a water filter, we have them at City Hall, DPW, and also at the library. On September 28th at 6:00 P.M., we have our last DDA concert in the plaza outside City Hall. The band is soundproof. This is the second time that they're coming, and they were absolutely incredible. The first time at the library, we had a great turnout. So we encourage you to come out to that last concert that we have, again, September 28th at 6:00 P.M. Today is National Voter Registration Day, so thank you to our community engagement manager for advertising that and sharing it with the community. So if you're not registered to vote, register today. You can register online. You can stop in tomorrow to register, but you can also stop in and register to be an election inspector. So if you're interested in learning more about the process, training with us to help out with elections, come in, fill out an application, and join us for, for the next coming elections. The Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission has a call for artists right now, so they are planning for their art show in October. So if you are an artist, or you have an art of work, arts of work, and interested in submitting them, or you know of an incredible artist, encourage them to submit their work. They have that opening now to submit the art to the commission, and the exhibition is scheduled for October 20th through the 22nd at the Patriot Building. Nine Mile Construction is still ongoing, but there is certainly a lot of work that continues to be, to be done. It's, there are some, some spots along where the current driving path is that we are experiencing and have had some complaints about deterioration, because there's a significant amount of traffic just on two lanes versus four. So there will be some backups this week as DPW does some patching down Nine Mile to ensure that it's safe and drivable in that condition. And we have our, our fire team here, so our deputy chief, Mr. Polk, and our chief, Brian Markworth. So I'd be remiss to not add that we got our fire truck back this week. So thank you to council for being committed to getting our fire truck fixed. It's not the new truck, but it's ready and back on the road. So with that, Mayor and council, if you have any questions, I can certainly answer those.
Any questions for our city manager? All right, saying none, going to our finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Nothing specific, but just wanted to point out that the auditors will be here bright and early Monday morning for another two and a half week engagement. Can't wait. So that will, that will consume a bit of time over the next few weeks, and that's really all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Saying none, going to our city attorney. Good evening, Mr. Albright.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Much like Mr. Blum, I do not have anything specific this evening either, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our attorney? Saying none, we have our police chief, Mr. Hanes. Any updates that you want to share with us tonight?
Good evening. No updates this evening, thank you, though.
Thank you. Any questions for our chief? Saying none, we're going to new business. Item A, approve the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the special land use for the property located at 17011 East Nine Mile Road, Huntington National Bank, council.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission and additional, and conditionally approve the special land use for an additional drive-through lane for the property located at 17011 East Nine Mile Road, based on the following condition, that the applicant must meet the requirements and recommendations listed in the planner's site review letter dated August 28, 2023, the special land use review letter dated September 14, 2023, and the requirements listed in the city engineer's review letter dated August 14, 2023. Additionally, that the zoning ordinance must be amended to change the required separation distance from residential district. The existing ordinance requires a 100-foot buffer at this time, and that needs to be changed to a 25-foot buffer. So with that, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion in support, please call the roll.
Can I ask one quick question, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Um, for anyone coming forward like this, how would they find our current, our new zoning ordinance? Like, I guess, when's MUNICODE going to be updated?
The actual zoning ordinance is updated on the website in full with all the beautiful pictures from McKenna. And then we send, well, we actually just got an agreement with MUNICODE. We send those over twice a year. So in the, I want to say, last year, we sent over multiple supplements, but this year, I believe it's the end of the year, and then June or July.
I think they go out the end of December. Do we, just, do we alert, like, if anyone puts anything in, that it's changed, though? Because I guess if someone goes right to MUNICODE, it's gonna be completely different than, they're not gonna maybe necessarily know to go to, like, the separate, you know, zoning ordinance?
There's nothing directly on MUNICODE, but there is on our website. So we have highlighted the update on our website. The entire ordinance is on the website for viewing, and then any of the changes, we also add to recently amended ordinances. We do add that section on our website as well until it's fully updated on MUNICODE.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
The planners, any application that comes in, the planners provide the updated zoning ordinance to every applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Pause it?
Yep.
Okay. Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, introduce and give first reading to amendments to the amended zoning ordinance, Chapter 50 Code of Ordinances. Council?
Madam Mayor, I would actually like to make a motion that we table item B, so that the planner can give us a more concise red line document of the changes that have been made. I know we got some additional amendments tonight, but I wanted to be easy for the public to be able to compare what was and the changes that we have made now, so that when we review it, even for council's purposes, we can kind of have a concise discussion and not spend a whole lot of time kind of reinventing the wheel or, or, you know, comparing.
I know what you're saying.
I'd second that, as long as, I guess, if they wanted to maybe briefly introduce any changes, just real quick now, since we're here.
I, my hope was, yeah, my hope was just in an effort to make sure we don't spend any unnecessary time, and so it's easier for the public to understand exactly what we're talking about, that we could table it just till the next meeting, and at our very next meeting, review these items.
All right. Second that.
Motion in support.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. We have motion in support, then we can have a discussion. Did you want to discuss something?
No.
Okay. Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes, and just a comment, Madam Mayor. Typically, with this council, way back since 1988, when one of the five members wished to table an item, and respect for them, because they have legitimate concerns, this council has always went along with tabling any item on the agenda. So I appreciate that, and we'll talk about it at the next meeting. So I vote yes.
Item C, 2021 through 2023 sanitary sewer contract modification cleaning and CCTV investigation. Council?
I move that we approve the contract modification, number one, to the 2021-2023 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation through Deutsch Industrial Services for the amount of $170,000, increasing the total construction cost of the project to $1,432,625, and to approve an additional $75,000 for instruction administration and observation services necessary to complete the project.
Support. Motion in support. Any discussion?
I'll just say that I'm, I'm glad that we saved money at our last meeting on the decorative arms, but anyway.
Councilman DeMonico?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. I had one question. What, if I could ask, what are city managers' recommendation is on this?
My recommendation to is approve, move forward with AEW's recommendation.
So then, what, what about, I've got a question then about the fee, the additional fee, let's see, from, for AEW? Seems like that's much higher than the rate we'd be charged for the rest of the project.
We have AEW in here. Did you want to hear from our city manager, or did you want to hear from Mr. Kern from AEW?
Oh, I think it would make more sense to hear from Ms. Walton.
Well.
Mr. Kern would have put the price together, so he'd be able to answer your question.
Well, sure, but I want the city to get a good deal also, so I'd like to know, like, why we are, usually we approve 11 and a half percent, and we've already started this project. It's a slight addition, and this is like 40-something percent on the extra work. We should be paying the 11 and a half percent we always pay roughly on a, a public works project. I, I'm, I'm not interested in hearing from Mr. Kern on this. I'm asking for our, our city. I don't know why we'd be paying four times the price for this part of the project than we'd be paying for the rest of it.
I guess what, what I'm going to do is I'm gonna ask him to explain why they went up, and then you asked for the record, you did ask for her opinion earlier. So once he tells you why they went up, we're gonna go back to our city manager and ask her, why did she agree with the upcharge? Because that's what, who you really want to hear from, because she goes through the contracts and things like that. And then, how about, then you respond to all the knowledge that you get from both of them. You want to do that? Does that sound good? Does that sound good to you?
Fine.
Okay, Mr. Kern, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. This project's a little unusual compared to most. Usually for construction, construction projects, yes, we would charge 11.5% for the construction administration observation services. This project's a little unique, because it's not necessarily a construction project. We've been providing full-time construction observation on this project. Again, it's a two and a half year-long project, so we're providing a full-time inspector out on the site to make sure everything is cleaned and televised properly and to record the quantities and everything. It's noted in the letter that was in your packet, um, you know, there's been a lot more heavy cleaning involved with this project than what was anticipated. We anticipated 25% of the sewer system would require heavy cleaning, and it's more so about 40 to 50% of the system that's required heavy cleaning. That's just because of the time it's been since we've done, there's been, it really hasn't been a comprehensive citywide sewer cleaning and televising program. It's just been parts here and there throughout the years. So, um, so the heavy cleaning increase, which is the reason for the increase in the cost, um, but because of the length of the project, the full-time observation out there and making sure that the heavy cleaning is done, that's why there's a higher cost to this. In addition to that, we also review the video and rec, make recommendations for future sewer rehab and put together a comprehensive master plan, uh, for future sewer repairs and rehabilitation. So that's a, a part of the cost to the project as well.
So when you upbrang us this, this project, you already had, I thought that was my phone. When you, uh, put this project together, you already gave us, um, the amount that you said that it would cost. So I guess, where did this additional, well, I heard you, but I, I'm not hearing you, because it's not, it's not clicking. When you, when you looked at the project, you said, okay, this is how much it's going to cost. And later on, you say, wait, hold on, this is going to cost a little bit more. Did, what, what changed in that whole, that measurement of, that, that, I mean, did you see something that was, um, that you didn't see before, that you're saying, okay, we got to go up, or is that what you're saying?
It would have to do with the heavy cleaning, because of the additional heavy cleaning that we have out there. It's, it's, the contractors had to work a lot longer in order to complete that work and clean those sewers. Because we have a full-time inspector on site, it requires more time for our inspector to be on site. That's why there's an increase in the cost.
So when you do projects and you measure, you know, how much it's going to cost, do you take that in consideration, that it may need extra cleaning? Or, or, I mean, because every project is different.
Yes.
You know, you're going to, okay, so why didn't you do this one?
We did. We put, we estimated it would be 25% of the system. Unfortunately, we found that it's more like 50% of the system that's required heavy cleaning.
Okay. Ms. Walton, so, um, I know.
And the other, I guess the other issue too is with our estimate, we did, originally, we did include a 10% contingency into the project, but at that time, the previous DPW director did not want us to put that 10% contingency into the award. So that's part of why this, this increase is coming in front of you as well. If we had that 10% contingency, I would not be in front of you tonight.
Okay, now, that is, that's what I want to hear right there. Okay, so that's, that may, in the, in addition to, so usually we do have the 10% contingency. This one didn't, and that is why, and when we have the contingency, it lets us know, if we go over, um, just like you said, it went over a little bit, that covers that, correct?
Right.
And since that was not in, um, the contract, that was before, I believe you were here, some of that stuff is now, a lot of stuff that we're fixing, because a lot of the people that were directors here and put things in place are not here, so we're going back and fixing some things. So I'm going to go back to the city manager, and then we're going to go back to Mr. DeMonico, so we can make sure everybody understands it on one page if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Um, I think his explanation is clear, that there's additional work, it's not general construction. Uh, the additional work of having someone from AEW consistently there warrants my recommendation to move forward with the motion and move forward with the project. So it'd be up to council, if you're interested in moving forward, um, and the, you know, understanding that there was no contingency built in, as there are with most projects.
Councilman DeMonico?
Sure. I'm trying to get all, all this straight. What's 10% of, I mean, I, I guess it depends if it's the 1.2 million or the 1.4 million, but 10% of 1.4 million's 140,000. You're saying that 10% would have covered it, we're asking for 170,000. So 10% contingency would not have covered this cost that we're talking about.
I guess, yeah, there would be a, there would be a, there would have been a little bit of an additional cost beyond a 10% contingency, but again, that's because of the heavy cleaning, the additional heavy cleaning that we didn't anticipate.
Yeah, and I think as Mr. Kern had, had expressed, when they initially started the project, the expectation was that 25% of the system would need cleaning, not 50%. So the additional work, once they started the project, um, has incurred additional costs. So if, we initially estimated to clean 25%, but in reality, we're cleaning 50, it does cost more to have that work done and to have that work inspected by AEW.
What was the engineering cost on, uh, the, the first part of the project that we've approved?
You have that?
I don't, I don't have that number on hand. I can get that for you, but I don't have it on hand. Okay.
Yes, councilwoman.
Um, it doesn't matter to me which, which of you answered this question, but what is the alternative if, if we don't approve this motion tonight?
If it's not approved, then we can't, I was, we're trying to complete the entire city. So we've accomplished a little over 85% of the city so far, so the area that, that's an area between Stevens and Ten Mile, east of Grashit, that we need to finish. If this isn't approved, we would not be able to proceed with completing that project.
Thank you. Any more, this, um, Mr. Blum?
I, I would like to jump in on that. If we do not complete the project, that opens us up for liability for sewer backups if we have not cleaned and televised the whole system. Um, so if anything happened in the area that was not completed, we would have an issue. So it's imperative that we, we get it done.
Originally, the estimate on this project back in 2021 was about 1.8 million dollars. So the bids that came in were quite a bit lower than what we anticipated, but originally we had budgeted 1.8 for this project.
Any other discussion? I don't want to cut anybody off. Mr. DeMonico?
I'm all set.
Okay. Uh, councilwoman?
I'm, I'm good to go.
Okay. We got motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Comunis?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Item D, approval of budget amendment BA 24-01, council.
So moved.
Support. Motion is support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Comunis?
That was my voice.
Oh, sorry. Council, Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Comunis?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Item E, discussion and possible motion on the city hall former, former fountain and garden. I don't know who wants to start. Um, well, I can let, uh, city manager do a, a short, uh, summary on this, so our audience and residents can know what this is about. Please.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so we have the, well, it was a former fountain, uh, most recently a garden right out front here, um, at city hall. Um, we have had some issues with it in the past year, um, where we're noticing leaking. Uh, we also had initially, I think, um, ACDC was maintaining a garden up front, um, and handed it back to DDA to maintain. Uh, we noticed that there was leaking from it when they were attempting to water it. Um, we had taken the items out so that we could attempt to seal it from the inside, um, to try and secure it, um, and noticed that the concrete is actually built over styrofoam, um, and it's leading to cracking and essentially disrepair. Um, so we'd like to bring it forward. Uh, our DDA has had a conversation, they own the shamrock that has been stationed in the middle of it, um, and turned kind of, um, to the side, and the DDA has had conversations of potentially moving it and getting pricing for, for what that could be within the DDA. Uh, but we wanted to bring forward the fountain, um, garden space to city council, um, for a discussion to see what your interest is, um, in moving forward with either repairing it or finding another item to go there, just so that we can properly plan, uh, moving into next year on what we should do, um, with that space.
Council?
Uh, madam mayor?
Yes.
Um, the recommendation from the city manager is that, uh, we direct the administration to research costs and logistics related to the city hall former fountain. I, um, and it's, and garden. Uh, I don't know what, what was inside that item, if, that would consider it being a garden, but I, I, I personally love the fountain. I loved it at the beginning, and I think Councilman DeMonico and his wife had a lot to do with that. Uh, that the colors would come up, and the fountain was working, and, uh, the shamrock, uh, as the city manager said, evidently belongs to the DDA. Uh, I didn't hear anything that the DDA absolutely wants it back, if that's a good thing, but I would like to have that set there. I would like to have you go out and, and find what the costs are, and, uh, then we can make an intelligent decision. Right now, we're, we're, you know, we're shooting blanks, because we don't know what the cost is going to be. If it's beyond repair and it's too costly, then we'll, we can make a decision at, at that council meeting to do that.
Council? Are you ready to make a motion?
I will. I would move, okay, well, let, anybody, well, let me make the motion, and it'll be on the floor, then you can ask if, if there's any other discussion. So I would move, uh, to direct the administration to research costs and logistics related to the city hall former fountain and garden for the, and garden.
Okay.
Second.
Councilwoman?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of, um, options to that motion, um, which would be that the city administration would research the cost and logistics for removal and replacement of the shamrock to DDA, um, to a new location within DDA, as they have requested, um, which is up in the information that we were given in the background. Um, and two, two, if that is done, um, to come back, if we were able to do that, to also come back with pricing for what it would cost to replace the concrete, um, in that set, in that slab. Um, and then number three, to research the costs associated with a more sustainable, um, symbol being placed there, maybe a metal shamrock, um, so that we still have the symbolism of the city, but something that's more sustainable, um, and maybe without a water feature that could create problems in the future.
And did you want him to amend?
So my request is if we could expand the motion to give, um, city administration the opportunity to look at those three different options and bring back pricing to us.
Um, yeah, madam mayor and clerk, I would agree to add those to my main motion, those three items.
I still support it.
Motion is support. Please call the roll. Uh, councilman?
One, one second, ma'am.
Um, just some background, so I guess, uh, councilman Curly, all, all I did was mention, we, we had this shamrock sitting around for apparently 10 years. I mentioned it to the DDA back in 2019, and the DDA motioned to install it right there in 2019.
But you, but, but you made the action, you started the action, and I'm going to give credit where it's due, uh, councilman.
Sure, all right. Regardless, I guess I'm just saying that the DDA had voted to put it there just a few years ago. Um, so, uh, I thought the angle, maybe we could have done a better angle for sure, but, uh, um, be good to see, I guess, what's, uh, causing the, uh, the leak out there, so. Um, and, uh, that's all. Madam mayor?
Sounds good to me. Motion is support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Sure.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Comunis?
Yes.
Item F, approval of the special event application for the harvest stroll at the children's garden by Proverbs 31 Stitch Lounge. Council?
So moved.
Support.
Motion is support. Any discussion?
Madam mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Uh, the applicant sent notice tonight that, um, she was, um, withdrawing her application because of the requirements for the additional insurance, naming the city as she is personally, um, she has personal insurance, um, and did not want, um, the additional liability. Um, she has a, a very long, um, well, well-stated letter. I'm, I'm happy to read that, but, um...
No, you don't have to. I just wish, uh, we would have known this, we would have just took it off the agenda. But that's fine, thank you. But I understand sometimes, a lot of times, people want to do a lot for the community, and then we have that, um, they have to have liability insurance, it can be bit costly. So I want to thank her and, um, thank her for even, um, trying to put this together. So we're going to move right along. Thank you, Ms. Holman, for that update. Item G, approval of, I'm sorry? Do we still got to call the roll when it doesn't exist?
But one of the things too is that she did pay for her application to go through the application process, so council could still move forward, um, with calling roll, and if she decides not to have the insurance, um, but she did pay an application fee to have it reviewed and, um, essentially reviewed by council as well. So all of the department heads have reviewed it, and then it comes to council to review. If she elects to not, um, get the insurance that she needs, then she wouldn't be able to hold the event. Um, but at least we followed through on our piece and what she had paid for on, on, on our end as the city.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Motion is support. Please call the roll. Uh, we're back on item F.
Um, it was councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Uh, I don't, did not get the second, I'm sorry.
It was me, yes.
Um, councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Comunis?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Um, and thank you, Ms. Walton, as well. Um, item G, approval of a letter of support for the regional transit authorities advancing corridors for transit grant proposal. We have Mr. Ian McCain, our director of economic development. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening, mayor and members of council. I'm doing well, and I hope you are also.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm here today to talk to you about approving or providing a letter of support for, um, a really exciting opportunity for us to expand transit, not just within the boundaries of East Point, but throughout the entire region. So this is a request by the, um, Regional Transit Authority, or RTA, of Southeast Michigan, for $125 million to provide up to $30 million for four of our major commercial corridors in Southeast Michigan, which includes Grashit Avenue from downtown Detroit up to M59, so the Clinton Township, Chesterfield Township, uh, border. So that does go through East Point. Um, I have spoken with, uh, some of you about it, just, uh, to provide additional clarity and support, and I hope to be able to answer some questions that have been expressed during those conversations, as well as provide insight on how this connects to our broader goals within our 2040 master plan document. So, um, with your permission, I'd like to continue through on my, uh, explanation, if that's all right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, is that okay with council, or did you?
Oh, I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
And I did talk to you, and you said you were going to call and, so, so, let, let me ask the first question. When did we receive this request to approve the letter?
Last week.
And when's the deadline?
This Friday. This Friday.
So that's what I guess in the old days, I used to call the 11th hour, um, agenda item. We put out the item on and say, oh, you've got, you, you only got three days, you, this is, you gotta prove it now, you can't wait till the next council meeting. So that answers my first question. And councilmembers, what I really wanna do, and maybe you can answer the questions after we had that conversation.
Mm-hmm.
This project may be the most beautiful thing in the world. I don't know that, you don't know that. And what I wanna find out, it, what, I don't care what they do to Roseville, I don't care what they do to the Grashit in Detroit. I, I'm concerned what they're gonna do, I put my glasses on, what they're going to do, uh, in East Point. For instance, it said, um, dedicated transit lanes. You're shaking your head no, and this is our document we got.
Not for this particular request, this is for funding to improve a distinct, existing transit along the corridors, so that includes the major Grashit buses and the DDOT and system as well as the fast buses that are supported by both systems.
So let's just get to, let's get down to the bottom line. What exactly are they gonna do to my city?
The goal is to improve transit access, so have more frequent trips, as well as improve the actual physical bus stops in the city.
Are they gonna use any of the lanes we got now for express lanes?
No, that is not a part of this plan.
Is this the final plan that they're gonna send to the Secretary of Transportation?
Yes, Councilman.
Except, we're not gonna see it.
Not the plan in its entirety, what I presented with you today was what shared with me for, uh, your letter of support.
See, again, councilmembers, the problem I have is, if I'm gonna put my name on a document sent to the Secretary of Transportation and just saying, you know, give them that 200 and some million dollar, 125 million dollars, uh, but we don't know what they're gonna do. So, Madam Mayor, let me, I'll stop asking questions and you, you may have some answers that, we talked yesterday, you may have some answers to the questions I had.
Yes. Um, so I wanna be clear and reiterate, um, from your questions, Councilmember Curly, that this is to improve existing transit. It is not the 2016 plan that I know you vehemently opposed when it was presented, uh, before voters. This is also not a millage. This would be grant dollars and this is for a letter of support. This is not that the city, and really, I, I think we should care about what's going to happen in Detroit and Roseville, that's just me personally, but in terms of, in terms of what's gonna happen in East Point between the 10 mile road, it is grant funding to support expanded transit access. Um, East Point's master plan prioritizes new, expanded and improved transit. Uh, 28% of residents that were surveyed were in support of that, that's on page 17 of our master plan. Um, there is also a number of other factors, I'll go back to the master plan in a second, but I believe 21st century problems require 21st century solutions and I believe this is a move in that direction. Something else from that campaign, whether you liked the whole campaign or not, that I really appreciated and that I remember fondly, uh, as a supporter of it, was that someone that you rely on relies on transit. So even if you're not personally taking transit, it could be, uh, the waiter or waitress that's bringing you a meal, it could be your doctor or your nurse that's coming in to check on you, making sure, um, you're healthy, you're not gonna have a heart attack, things like that. So I think it's important for us to talk about what's going to happen in East Point, I 100% agree with that. I'm here because I love and care about East Point, um, and I want to serve our residents in the best way that we can. But I also like to think about the big picture and the broader region because Detroit and Roseville and St. Clair Shores and Warren and all the other communities that make up the tri-county and broader area are our neighbors and I believe we should care also what's happening in their cities because it does affect us as well. Um, another factor too, I think that we need to consider, there is a large aging population that's coming up, the baby boomers, they're calling it the Silver Tsunami, and they'll need these service improvements to maintain mobility and quality of place and life. So it is a serious issue and I think we should actually commend the city of East Point for providing a number of senior care facilities. I think we actually have more, I would say, than the rest of the area. So we're doing good in terms of providing housing for them, but we wanna make sure that we match that housing with transit, whether they're accessing goods, goods and services in East Point or in our neighboring communities. Okay, back to the master plan. So, on page 25, under transportation access and mobility goals, these include providing for complete streets. If you're not familiar with what complete streets are, whether you're driving a car, you're walking, you're on a bus, you're taking a bike, everyone has safe and equitable access. So that's part of, uh, this, this grant and this plan. Enhancing public transportation conditions is the second piece. Uh, expanding existing non-motorized systems throughout East Point, as well as improving circulation and access management. So next, moving on, on page 49, we have our future transportation plan, which uplifts transit connections, as well as under implementation subsection, administrative actions. On page 75, cooperation between local units of government, um, and that also includes agencies like MDOT, in this case, the RTA, uh, is another goal or another way to move, uh, this master plan forward. So again, this is to improve existing transit, it is not the 2016 plan, it will not remove the median, which I know is one of your concerns, Councilmember Curly. Um, so far, I can confirm that letters have been signed by Macomb County, the city of Roseville, and, uh, they expect to receive letters from Mount Clemens and Clinton Township as well. Um, in addition, since this is a broader plan that includes other commercial corridors throughout our region, the cities of Dearborn, Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale and Huntington Woods have also signed letters of support. And based on the feedback that I've received, uh, from the RTA, it is anticipated that East Point would likely be one of, if not the only, community, uh, to not sign a letter of support if you decide to move in that direction tonight. Um, I've presented, I think, a wealth of information that I hope will help you make your decision. I appreciate your time and I, uh, hope for your support in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, good presentation.
Um, well, it's okay. Um, one of the letters we have, the, the project overview, and maybe you can explain it, you, obviously you didn't write it. In Southeast Michigan, a lack of regional transit connections has reinforced historic barriers based on race and class.
Yes.
What the hell does that sentence mean?
It means that we have one of, to be, can I speak frankly, councilmember?
Ask the mayor, don't ask me.
Uh, Mayor, may I speak frankly?
If he hears, you can too, go ahead.
Fair enough. Um, it, it pains me to say this, but we have one of the poorest and most fragmented transit systems in the country, you might even say in the world. Um, and part of that, you can blame on the auto industry. Part of that, you can blame on racism. Part of that, you can blame on classism. So there are a number of these systems that are competing and that have created these fragmented systems, where you have Smart and you have DDOT and you have the People Mover, the Q Line, uh, Mogo, all these different systems trying to provide an adequate level of support, competing for resources, competing for funding. So all we're trying to do is get some of the systems that support East Point additional funding to improve transit.
I'm gonna approve the submittal of a letter of support to the Regional Transit Authority for the Advancing Corridors for Transit Grant Proposal.
You're making a motion?
Did I already make the motion?
No.
That's my motion, yeah. I'm making the motion. I just need support.
Support, but may I ask that we, um, amend that to ask that, um, with that motion, that RTA, SimCOG and MDOT provide to the city in a, at a future date, a more detailed explanation of the proposed impact and benefit to the city, city of East Point directly.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, Councilmember Cobbmanese, yes, I think that's a great idea. The other thing I wanted to add that I mentioned to Councilmember Curly, but I should've mentioned in my remarks, is that I believe that if and when, uh, RTA and the region receives this funding, I anticipate a robust community engagement process, something that the RTA's website, um, is already engaged with right now, so I would encourage all of you and any members of the audience or folks listening at home, uh, to go onto their website and provide input on what you'd like to see in terms of better transit access in Southeast Michigan.
I amend my motion to what Councilwoman just said, I just need another support on that.
I support.
Motion and support, any more discussion?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Mr. Attorney, I wouldn't, I'm going to, uh, offer a substitute motion. And, uh, my substitute motion is that we table this item until such times that our, the agencies provide us with detailed information is exactly what they're gonna do within the East Port, East Point boundaries. That's my substitute motion.
Any support, anybody second that?
I would support that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, we have discussion. I think the problem with, um, and so I, this would be the reason, only reason that I would vote no to that second motion, is that the problem with waiting is that our letter of support is due before our next council meeting. So tabling, tabling this would not give us an opportunity to timely respond with a letter of support. Um, and so based on that, I, I agree that they, it would be nice if we were given, um, more direct information about how this will directly impact and benefit, um, East Point. That notwithstanding, I think it's pretty clear and I appreciate, uh, Mr. McCain's very clear and very direct explanation that, um, we want to provide more transportation to support to this region. And we wanna make sure that our community, which is, um, the gateway to Macomb County, is, uh, is not the one piece of the puzzle that's not a part of this process. We have many people that are, um, going to use Grashit, it's a main thoroughfare, um, to get to other points of Macomb County or in the opposite direction to the city of Detroit. And I don't wanna see us prevent anyone, um, from having adequate transportation. Everyone cannot afford to own a vehicle. There are many, many families who, uh, require the use of public transportation, so whatever we can do as a city to support the facilitation of that, um, we should do, and this is just a supportive letter. This is not us having to pay anything out, this is us simply saying we support and promote, um, changing the fragmentation to providing as much, um, opportunity for transportation for our citizens as possible.
Again, Madam Mayor, repeating myself again, I, I, I'm not against probably the project itself. Um, I find it interesting that we would receive the letter three or four days before our, our council meeting and the deadline is three days after our council meeting. I, I find that pretty manipulated. And I do, and I'm sorry, um, I, I do take exception from this advancing corridors of transit, I do take exception of them and in theory, in your candy that the bear is based on race, race and class, I take exception of that. And I think anybody that have, is involved with racing should also take exception of that. Um, we don't, we don't send the letter in by Friday, you think that, uh, they're gonna stop, they're not gonna send their request to the Secretary of Transportation? Or, I, I think they still will, but I think I probably said enough. Madam Mayor, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, going to our attorney, do we do the first roll call for the first motion of support? How does that go?
Do the motion to table first.
Is, you vote on the substitute, uh, motion first.
Okay. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember, Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
No.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Owens?
No.
Now we go to the second one?
To the first motion.
The first motion.
First motion.
Okay. You got a motion and support, please call the roll.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Curly?
No.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Moving right along. Thank you, Mr. McCain, great work.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next is payroll and bills, counsel?
I'm not gonna jump that.
Counsel?
Mayor, ala motion, we pay the bills in the amount of $20,882,519.66.
Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next is the second hearing of the public, the second hearing of the public is now open. Anyone would like to speak, comment, make some suggestions, say something positive?
McLean Buchak, East Point resident. I have a question about the cleaning of the sewers. Um, could you explain the difference between light, medium and heavy sewer cleaning? Because there was a discussion about it earlier.
Okay, well, let me explain this, how this works. You speak and then at the end, we get to speak, so we don't go back and forth, I think she mentioned that earlier.
Oh.
So, you know, that's how we do order here, you speak and then when you're done, we listen to you, write notes and then at the end, either we comment or, uh, tell you, you know, give you a comment back, or we get back to you on that.
Okay.
How does that sound?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hey, good evening.
Hi there. Linda Flans, East Point resident. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, I know recently we got a new garbage contract and before that, I believe we were with Roseville, so I was wondering, um, why do we get on a contract by ourselves? And is Roseville still with GFL and what are they paying compared to what our increase was? Um, on the senior center, I was wondering if the requirements have changed to live there. Um, the residents on South Park, we're hearing a lot of music blaring from the senior center, so we're wondering, that's something that we've never had to deal with before. Um, and we're over a block away and we're hearing music from the senior center. Um, the other just comment I wanna say is on the city hall fountain. I believe the fountain, um, was turned into a flowerbed shortly after it was built because the parts were being stolen for it. Um, so I'm, there was mention of, um, turning it back into a fountain. So if that's the case, aren't we gonna have the same issue with parts being stolen? So, um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Flans, I miss you at the last cleanup initiative. 'Cause I know you were at one of them, yeah. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Say nine, the second hearing of the public is now closed, Mayor Council report, starting with Councilman Curly.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first thing, if you've noticed in front here, in front of my name tag, you see a little cutout of a B and, uh, that was given to me today by my dear friend James, who is the son of Sarah Lassito, our county commissioner, and I just wanted, and I know, I think he's probably watching right now, so James, I love you. A library report, as I always give you. Um, in the month of August, we had 5,212 visitors to our beloved library. And the highest date was, uh, time was 219 people showed up. So you can imagine how busy all the folks who were there were for that whole day. That, that, that was remarkable. A couple of things that are happening, again, uh, we need your bottles and cans, a deposit, um, take them over to the library, they're doing fantastic things with it. Uh, if you don't wanna do it yourself, give me a call and, uh, your address and leave it on a porch and I'll come pick them up, uh, for you. Couple of things that the friends of the library are doing, um, they are going to get, ah, well, the director said instruments to put outside. And they, she showed me one of the things, a pedal drum that the kids can actually play. So that's one of the things. And, and the friends of the library are also buying new tables, um, for the kids' portion of the, of the library. So they, they do a lot of things and if you've never been over there, um, just go over there, enjoy yourself. You don't have to buy anything, you don't have to take anything out, but just be proud of our library because I don't think, no, I, I think, I know, uh, that we're probably the best library in the whole county. And we, our staff is incredible, they work so hard. So I, I'm pleased, uh, Madam Mayor, to be on that, that committee as a liaison and, um, we'll continue to, uh, report on that, but, uh, your, your, your cans and bottles are important, guys. You've got, somebody's got a garage and they got a whole bag full of cans, right? You know, shake your head yes, I know you do. And if we took them to wherever to cash in, you're gonna get a buck and a half probably. That buck and a half isn't, can't buy a cup of coffee, but that buck and a half added to the hundreds and thousands of people who are bringing cans over there, will help buy all those new instruments they're gonna buy and buy the new tables. So I'm asking you a personal favor, okay? And those watching too, to call or just take it over there. And, uh, they would really appreciate it. Madam Mayor, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening. Um, just a couple of things, uh, our local library is having experience, Iowa Royal National Park on the 21st at 6:30 PM. Um, also, and I'm sure you're probably gonna talk about this, but on the 23rd, um, from 10 to 2 is, um, the day that you can recycle your electronics. And then on the 26th, um, the library will be hosting at 2 PM an iPhone and iAndroid smart class. So, um, for those of you who aren't taking full advantage of all the benefits of your iPhone or your Android, please go check out that class. Um, it's amazing how many of us have devices and we only use one or two functions on them and don't understand the full scope of what we actually have in our hands. So I'd encourage you to check that class out. Also, today is National Voter Registration Day, um, so please make sure that you're registered to vote. And then I just, I wanted to commend, um, our city administration and staff. I think East Point has, um, by far, um, the best team of directors and managers, um, in city administration that, um, in, in Southeast Michigan and particularly within Macomb County. And I wanna give, um, a shout out to our community engagement manager, she has been doing a phenomenal job with getting information out on social media, making sure that the community is fully... sure that the community is fully engaged and aware of what we're doing. And so, Juanita, you're doing a phenomenal job. To Mr. McCain, as well, our community engagement manager, I mean, our economic development manager, and John, I just, I think what you all are doing in terms of engaging the community, getting business owners more involved in what the city is doing, is phenomenal. So, keep up the good work. And I just, you know, all of our city staff does a great job, but I wanted to specifically highlight those two. And of course, to our city manager and assistant city manager, you guys have done a great job with not only putting fillers out there to get good applicants in, but you've done a good job of vetting the applicants that have come along, which is why we have an amazing fire and police chief now. So, thank you for your hard work. Lastly, I would say dreams are extremely important. You can't do it unless you imagine it. Always remember that your focus determines your reality. And those are quotes by George Lucas, for any of my Star Wars fans. And then, from my favorite author, "Let your eyes look directly ahead toward the path of moral courage, and let your gaze be fixed straight in front of you toward the path of integrity." And that's a Proverbs from chapter four, verse twenty-one. Thanks.
Councilwoman DeMonico?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing up the beautification event on Saturday. If you want a full list of the electronics that you can bring, check out the Facebook event for the Beautification Commission's page. Look for that on Facebook. And actually, as being a software developer, I'm surprised I hadn't watched Star Wars until just a couple of years ago, all of them. I know, it's a surprise, but I've, yeah. So, I'll have to look up that quote, maybe don't know that one yet. But let's see, a couple of quick answers. Ms. Flans, on the garbage contract, and I think, I don't see her, oh, wait, yep, I see her. We received a bid from GFL and from Priority Waste, and Priority Waste was actually lower for this upcoming contract. I don't know what Roseville's doing at the time, so we did get a cheaper rate out of the two this time. And last time, we did sign an agreement at the same time as Roseville. They were technically separate contracts, and I don't know what they're up to. We'd have to ask them on their garbage contract now, though. And then, as for, I thought there was one other item from hearing of the public. Oh, Mickey, you'll have to get with Mr. Kern, and he'll tell you all about the cleaning of the sewers after the meeting. I cannot answer that question. Then, for a couple of other things, I guess, first, for the engineering on this, speaking of the CCTV, I looked up while we were sitting here what we paid. We paid last time one hundred forty-five thousand in engineering and fifty thousand for the review of the footage, as we talked earlier, which is one hundred ninety-five thousand on a one-point-two-million-dollar bid. Comes out to, it's eleven and a half percent for the engineering and four percent for the review, so about fifteen, sixteen percent. And Council, on this last vote we just took, we just paid forty-four percent instead of sixteen percent. So, I think we should have negotiated a different price on that. That is why I brought that up earlier. And then, of course, like at our last meeting, we did this battalion chief vehicle, which are current ones, we didn't know at the time, we didn't have the answer. It's a nine-year-old vehicle with twenty-three thousand miles, and we voted to do a one-thousand-dollar-a-month lease instead of purchasing a new vehicle. I know we talked about maybe after six months, we will purchase it. I guess we'll see. But I think we're going to pay more than we needed to on that vehicle. And, you know, at this meeting, we just modified our general fund budget to reduce the general fund surplus by eight hundred forty thousand. I didn't have a chance earlier, but Mr. Blum, maybe if I can catch it after. I know the last budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-three, it was looking at a three-point-one-million-dollar deficit. I'd like to know, I guess, how much of that was moved over to this new fiscal year, and hopefully, it's a lot smaller than the three-point-one million, or else we're looking at a pretty large deficit over a two-year period. Then, just, I guess, a few more comments, I guess, on Nine Mile. I'm just disappointed, and I guess what we're doing, we've got a once-in-a-generation chance to do this project, and one by one, we're just removing anything special about the project. You know, we've got no additional crosswalks right now. We've, we're actually removing trees. I know we've talked about adding more trees, but if someone comes to the planning commission, they've got to have those additional trees at their plan. But we've approved plans that are removing trees. We're going to have less trees on Nine Mile afterwards. I hope that we change it, but I was hoping that we could do it ahead of time. We're removing curb cuts, so that's exciting. There are way too many curb cuts. I mean, if you feel like it's kind of hard to drive up and down Nine Mile, that's because there's so many curb cuts. You know, it's a lot more, to me, relaxing to drive down Stevens or Topher or something like that than it is Nine Mile. And then, also, we didn't talk about, like, improving any bus stops, or, you know, maybe putting more of the shelters at the bus stops, things like that. I hope we eventually do, down the line, you know, some bike racks, something like that. But I guess that's just my personal opinion on that. And, you know, we've got a multi-year project, and I don't know, I think we're not going to meet a lot of the goals, as I've, you know, said at some other meetings. But thanks to all the residents that reached out about Nine Mile and other things, you know, be it email, Facebook, whatever, snail mail. So, appreciate it. And that's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Thank you. Just want to send a shout out to Mark Kilgore and promoting the message for the East Point Community Action Coalition. I think that you guys are doing a great work, and just want to encourage you guys to continue on and continue on with your mission. And for anybody that wants Narcan training, Mark is the resident authority on that, and he does Narcan training. If weather permits, every Wednesday, in front of me, manual church here in East Point. Also, I want to thank our county commissioner, Sarah Lucido, for inviting me to their neighborhood watch. She asked me to talk a little bit about what was going on on Nine Mile, so I tried to fill them in as to where we were and what was going on. And shout out to Chief Haynes for coming out, and thank you for letting me take cuts, because I had to go pick up my daughter. But it was just great to see the community come together, that neighborhood come together, and just talk and see that tight-knit that they have. Lastly, another thought for your walk, loosely quoted, something that I heard, is that you deserve to be filled with the same thing that you pour out. So, it focuses on your intentions and how you treat people, the things that you do. And some people may say you reap what you sow, but it's just another variation of that. So, just a little something to think about, to meditate on. That is all that I have.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, for your views, your point of views, whether I agree to disagree or not. Thank you for what you said. First of all, I also want to thank God for allowing me to be here tonight, and let me be your mayor. I really want to thank him for that, because everything that I've done, I give honor to him, and everything that I don't, whatever he doesn't allow, is because of who he is. So, also, I want to say happy birthday to my daughters, my twin daughters. A lot of you know them, and some of you seen them on TV or seen them in person. Cameron and Kayden Owens, they will be fifteen years old, three more years, you will be grownups. I want to say happy birthday. I love you. You have seen so many things your mom has went through, good, bad, ugly, and you always have had my back and my best interest. So, I cannot wait to see what you all become. I don't know if it's going to be a first lady of a country, a governor, I don't know what you will become, but I know it's going to be strong women, and I always put, tell my children to put God first in all that they do, and they have done that, even though they don't understand certain things, or how people treat their mom and things like that, and different things they see on TV. Even though they see things that may be ugly, it has not disturbed, stopped them from the Word of God and loving people no matter what race, background, or whatever they tend to do. So, I am so proud of you, you both. My one daughter said, Mom, my favorite subject is geometry. I don't know why she said that. And my other daughter said, what was it, Mr. Blum, that they love accounting? And I'm like, oh, Lord. So, I don't know, they love, they love everything that I hate. Geometry, I don't understand geometry or accounting, but hey, that's just who they are. So, I just want to tell them happy birthday. And when you got twin daughters, they want to do, they want everything on Amazon, so I don't know what I'm going to get them on Amazon. So, if y'all got some ideas, let a teenage mom know, because it's a lot, I mean, a mom of teenagers, I'm not a teenage mom, ugh, a mom of teenagers, no. But I love my daughters, they are amazing. They helped me write my first book on teaching people how to be the mayor. They have taught me a lot. They tell me a lot, they teach me a lot. So, if you have children in the audience, if you don't, you have a niece, nephew, or whatever, children can teach you a lot. I don't care how old you are, where you come from, kids know a lot. Sometimes they teach us how to be adults sometimes. I remember that young lady who came up here, who spoke with us, Ms. Ritter, and she just spoke so proudly and loud, and she spoke up for people. And she is fourteen years old, that young lady that goes to the high school. And it just blows my mind how our young people are speaking up on behalf of others. And that's amazing, because we have some adults that don't speak up. They shut their mouths when things that they see shouldn't be done. And we have these young people, the new generation, they're going to speak up, they're going to be fighters. They're going to, they're going to be treating people better than society, the things that we see. And I am super excited what this new generation is going to do. They're going to be fighters, they're not going to take anything, and they're going to be, they're our future. So, again, I just want to say thank you for everybody that came out tonight. Again, I love you, Cameron and Kayden Owens, you are amazing, mommy loves you. So, that being said...
So long.
Support. Motion and support, call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbeneese?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Median adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.